If it was like this, you could think twice about it.
All right, it is six o'clock on Monday, August 5th. We'll call our meeting door and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have a roll call.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, next is the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Collister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Do we have any discussion here? Take the roll.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Item five is public participation. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to address us at this time? Anyone on Zoom? That will move on. Item six is the presentations for tonight. Start off with Brad Karanda and the Building Department's second quarter report.
We'd be wore out. This is it right here. So I'm here to to give you some highlights of what's going on with the Building Department. For the second quarter of this year. Permits, we had sixty-two permits in that quarter, which is about ten more than the same time last year. Obviously, we had some weather come through and we had extra roofs that had to get done. So up a little bit there, a little tick up. Been dealing with some planning and zoning stuff, which is later on in the agenda, some of it anyway. Rental inspections, I've been doing quite a few of them here lately. In the second quarter, I've done quite a few. I believe last count was one hundred and seventy-two so far to get to my three hundred or three fifty, whatever that is. My third for the year. Property maintenance, been working slow but sure on that. The one thing, one that maybe people don't notice, in at a property maintenance committee meeting, I was handed a letter that was sent by the city in two thousand fourteen to a property owner of a building that was in very bad shape. From what I've seen, there was absolutely no follow-up on it. So I started early this year, I'm working with that owner. And he did tear it down. It's completely down and cleaned up as we speak. So that's a ten-year project for the city. But it just it just shows you, if you talk to him, get some presence there, maybe some persistence. You know, don't let him forget you're watching. And that's usually what makes him move. So that's just just a little thing that I wanted to throw out there. Other than that, I guess that's my spiel. At least that's all the words I had wrote down.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Brad? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, next we have Erin McCollie from the Macocheta area Chamber of Commerce.
Hello. The first half of two thousand twenty-four for the chamber has been a huge success, I feel. We kicked off the year with our Chamber Gala, presenting awards to multiple businesses and celebrating the graduation of our two thousand twenty-three leadership cohort. We've revived popular events like our lunch and learns and our chamber bashes. The first lunch and learn focused on community resources, which we found out participants greatly appreciated learning how to access these. For several months, we planned and executed the return of the Timber City Adventure Race. With a new route avoiding Highway sixty-one, the race was a huge success, attracting one hundred and fourteen participants from seven different states. We received excellent feedback and look forward to continuing this event in the future. Initially, we hoped for the rain to rise the river level when we first started planning. Well, we definitely got our wish and we were praying for it to stop by the end. Fortunately, the water was at the perfect level on race day. Post-race activities in the green space were also well-attended by both participants and community members. Back in April, I attended the Iowa Tourism Conference along with Jackson County Tourism and learned about a new pilot program called First Impressions. Recognizing Macocheta's potential, I formed a committee and applied. Out of numerous applications, Macocheta was chosen as one of two communities in the state to participate. This program helps communities identify strengths and weaknesses through the eyes of first-time visitors and develop strategies to strengthen the tourism economy, attract new residents and workforce, and enhance the quality of life. The assessment is conducted by a team of unannounced visitors similar to a secret shopper program. We provided the team with lists of popular attractions and events to highlight, and they take it from there. They will present their feedback and recommendations at a community forum on October fourteenth. Our new community guide was published so far this year in partnership with Sycamore Media and the Macocheta Sentinel Press. We've also designed a new brochure featuring area businesses and activities, not strictly chamber members. As Macocheta's Welcome Center, these materials have been very valuable for visitors that come in seeking suggestions on local attractions. Our monthly newsletter now reaches almost nine hundred email addresses, and our social media presence is well-followed. We've received excellent feedback on the information we're sharing. Since my last report, we've held five ribbon cuttings, gained thirteen new members, bringing our current membership to two thousand or two hundred and seven. This growth demonstrates, I feel, that local businesses and individuals trust our mission and efforts. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, Erin.
You're good, thank you.
All right, finally, we have Scott Warren with YMCA.
I'm gonna pull up your PowerPoint, Scott.
Perfect, thank you.
Five minutes, please.
It'll take you five minutes to pull it up?
Yeah, sure.
Well, I appreciate everybody having me here today. As you know, we can go on to the next slide. So the YMCA is contracted to run the city rec facility, rec programs, and we manage city revenues and city expenses. Go ahead. We offer a wide variety of programs. For those of you with young children, I do coach the swim team, so I encourage you, let's get to continue to grow our marlin swim team. As we look at how many people we served this last fiscal year, we served over thirty-six hundred members. I would encourage you to take a look and really look at what other organization is serving more people than the YMCA. You look at the number of children, one and two children take part in the YMCA. We had over eighty thousand visits. This summer alone, we're on pace to have over fifteen thousand visits to our pool. And we have the largest membership and program revenue since inception. We always say the Y is a great value. That's why we like to compare what we charge versus other Ys in our area and then also other Ys in similar-sized communities. Really, you look at what we charge, we haven't had an increase in twelve years. So you stop and think, what else are you what else are you aware of that hasn't gone up one penny in twelve years?
They're flying through.
Also, I could slow down. Membership does have its privileges, so you get full facility access, free group exercise, land exercise, water exercise, cycling, and then the discounts on on programs. As we look at our annual giving campaign, these are the dollars that we utilize so that we can make sure that we're open to everybody regardless of ability to pay. So this past year, two hundred and seventy-two donors contributed over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So that's allowed us to scholarship one in four members. And our endowment, we are right about ten years that we've been working on that. Matt Osterhaus chairs that group. Right now, we're at seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. It's been raised from fifty-four families. And we have five additional bequests that haven't been realized yet. Initial goal is one million dollars, and you look at what that's kicked off and what that's meant from a dollars and cents standpoint. We actually generated a little over twenty-six thousand dollars this last year, which went directly towards our operations. And this next year, we should have somewhere between twenty-eight thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars that should be generated from the endowment that is held at our community foundation. You look at our our financial performance, we continue to improve year after year. Couple things, key things to keep in mind. You look at the twenty-three, twenty-four number of eighteen thousand three oh seven. City budget's one hundred and seventy-five thousand for rec programs and facilities. So effectively, what we've done is we've returned one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. So those are dollars that are unutilized or weren't used during the fiscal year. And as you compare to twenty-ten, twenty-eleven versus now, we've actually seen a hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollar improvement. So that makes a huge, huge impact in our community. You look at the variety or the just the the number, sheer number of board members we've had over the years, these are the people that are really our eyes and ears. So whether they're active members right now or former board members, those are the folks that are always really good at looking out into the community and identifying what's needed in our community and helping to position the YMCA to meet those needs. As we look ahead, key targets for this next year, we look to exceed one thousand and fifty membership units. This year, we were over a thousand for the first time in our history and generate four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revenue. This year, we were over four hundred thousand for the first time. We look to continue to grow our endowment. Three key benchmarks. One, at the million-dollar level, it allows us to maintain affordability, maintain membership rates where they're at, maintain program rates so that we're affordable for everybody. At the two million dollar rate, if we look at outdoor water, you look at a splash pad, you look at things like that. At the two million dollar mark, it would allow us to pretty much break even, depending on the size and scope of what's constructed. So once again, kind of looking out into the future and and decision that hasn't been made yet. At the five million dollar mark, which is our long-term goal, that creates a sense of financial independence. So at five million dollars, we're kicking off about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a game changer. Imagine if the Y budget was standalone, and then as a city council, you could figure out, do we invest in a public works truck, a fire truck? So it's not just the Y when you're giving to the endowment. It's a much larger picture. So long-term, that's really what we're shooting for is the YMCA. Grow programs to exceed a hundred thousand. This last year, we were at ninety-four thousand, which was the the highest that we've ever been. Raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the annual giving campaign and continuing to improve year-over-year financial performance. And planning for future future expansion. So another thing that was brought up at goal-setting, and I know will be discussed again here in September. Any questions?
When's the pool gonna go down to fix the chipping?
That'll be the last last two weeks in August. So I believe August nineteenth, we will be down. And then our goal is to have that be only down for two weeks, but you know, you know how how construction goes. So fingers crossed, we can have it back up and going in two weeks.
Councilman, Scott's also noticed just one more spot in the pool and checked pretty regularly, but once the pool's empty, we're really gonna get in there as well and make sure we don't have any other surprise issues or hopefully don't have any surprise issues after this service.
Okay, anybody else? If not, thank you, Scott.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Well, we have no public hearings for tonight. Move on to our consent agenda. Now, item A is minutes from our July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting. Bills payable through August fifth, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. And item C, the renewal of a Class B retail alcohol license to Quick Star, number eight ninety-four. Motion by Collister, and it was seconded by Coleman. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay. Item ten is new business. A is a resolution regarding collection of payment of city costs to abate nuisances and enforce ordinances. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thanks for sitting through our presentations, and hopefully you find them interesting. This first action item is related to unpaid city costs as it relates to abatements and enforcing city ordinances. Most of them are snow removal-related. One, which makes up the majority of this cost, is lead line replacement from a curb box repair. So that's what's before you tonight. It's not any different than many items that have been before you on this specific order, but ultimately go to taxes because they've been unpaid to the city.
Okay, we have a motion by Collister, seconded by Rickroll. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next, we have a resolution adopting the Jackson County Iowa Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan for two thousand twenty-four. The update.
Mayor, Council, and Mayor, maybe I should just turn it over back to you since you attended most of these meetings. But I I provided a link to three hundred and eighty-one pages. I'm not sure if you all have had a chance to review it, but I did not want to print it out in the council packets or anything. I did supply just kind of a generalized update on what we're working through as a result of the last plan, which is mostly levy-related. But this is a kind of regional formality for Jackson County to get everyone on the same page, and if we can pursue opportunities later, that's what this plan is about.
Here we have a motion by Collister. Seconded by Ailinga. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Ailinga?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is a resolution supporting the application for a HUD lead hazard control grant in conjunction with the City of Clinton and pledging the local match for housing units located in Macocheta.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if everyone's entirely familiar with this program. We've we've advertised it on our Facebook a couple times, and it's been popular. It is managed by ECIA, and it's in partnership with the City of Clinton, but if there's known lead paint issues at a home, and there's an opportunity for the homeowner to apply towards this program, this dedicates twenty-five hundred dollars towards sharing the cost of that lead paint removal. And so that's ranged for us anywhere from ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine to twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight every single year since two thousand and eighteen. The grant was finished this past year. We're applying towards a new allocation. We may or may not get it. It's it's something that I think is a positive program. Not sure how the whole council would feel on this sort of a thing, but this is tith eligible, and that's been the way that we've been reclaiming these costs. And it's good for the resident if they want to pretty up their place and make it a healthier environment, and it improves the neighborhood. So I put in a recommendation to support this item. If you feel otherwise, I'm happy to follow your direction, but I recommend this.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? And take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is a resolution committing one hundred thousand dollars towards the green space redevelopment project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, this item's not anything new to anyone that's been paying attention to the fundraising surrounding this project, but the state has officially released their grant guidance for enhanced Iowa CAT, which would be our target to finalize the rest of the grant money for it. And they officially need a resolution from the city and from the county as well, so I'm going to the county meeting tomorrow to explain a bit of a similar item to them. But this ultimately, if you remember back from the bond proceeds conversation we had about allocating funds, this was part of it at that time. So it's been pre-planned, it's ready to go. We just need an authorizing resolution to commit those funds towards the project, and that would go into our application for the state.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Any discussion on this? Take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E is a resolution declaring emergency sanitary sewer repairs at two hundred South Jones Street and authorizing chick fry excavation to do work on an amount estimated at twenty-one thousand, ninety-two dollars.
Thank you, Mayor. So it could probably turn over to Jen here shortly, but would have thought this would have been done by now from some of the conversations I've had with a couple of you to get this moving. We have a known pipe knuckle that's just a little bit off, a few inches, heavy rain events, there's a bit of water infiltration, it's creating a bit of an issue. It has been a bit of a risk, and so Jen's done a fantastic job, and not just Jen, but Alliance and jetting that whole area, getting it ready for Meadow Park subdivision and camera-ing it. And we've gone further downstream and discovered this knuckle, and it's not easy to get to, and it's not always fun to tear up street for twenty feet and then find it, grade it correctly, backfill it, get the concrete or asphalt back on. So we thought chick fry would be out, and they had us on the schedule, and I didn't necessarily feel enough notice had gone out to neighbors that roughly six feet width of the street was gonna be inaccessible, and you know, I didn't want someone to throw a fit that they can't get their truck or car out of the back. So Jen tried chick fry today, would have think, hopefully, some point this week, but it's possible, it might be a little bit of time yet. But with this item, we we want to make sure that we are reducing our risk, and I think that we've done as much as we can. And there's still one particular home that's backing up in that area, and we've continued to chat with them without getting into a legal conversation. But this is really our nuclear option to try to solve the issue. And Jen and the CIP for manholes will has the funds to cover this balance. It's just a matter of trying to get it fixed, get it resolved. But again, I think that this is kind of our last resort in that area for solving a problem. Do you have any kind of questions on this? It's kind of sprung up on us here in the last couple of weeks.
Are you fairly certain this will fix the problem?
We are fairly certain it will fix the problem. So what the line has done is it goes into a manhole, and the line has sunk two to three inches. So when it comes into the manhole, it's below the manhole, and it's hitting the manhole right here, and we're backing solids up. And we've tried cambering it lots of times, and we've gotten within about thirty feet of the manhole, and we never can get any further because the water's so high in it. So when we camera, we have to keep our head above the water. All we see is is cruddy water. And we finally got to where we could get a picture of this. I talked to three contractors. Two of them wanted to give me estimates on it. Chick fry is gonna be our quickest bet. If we get a lot of rain, we back up. So I think once that this can flow into the manhole as it should, it should take care of our issues.
What caused the shift?
Probably just the freeze and thaw, I would think. This line is is probably, who knows, eighty years old, and it's it's just the the freeze and thaw.
So just, I was just gonna say the exact same thing. It's not uncommon to have eighty-year-old pipes in a town, and that's that's what every city deals with, is these water mains and trying to put a Band-Aid on them or make some major investment to go get them.
If if it would be further up the line, we could like Band-Aid it like we do a water main, we could put a wrap around it. But since it's right at the manhole, it's gonna take some construction to move that up because you gotta keep that slope on it as well. Otherwise, if if you put, if you bring that line up and it flows backwards, we're gonna be going backwards with it. That's why something like this isn't something that Alliance takes on. We always have to hire it out because it's more of a beyond-us type of deal.
Okay. Any other questions?
So moved.
Okay, we had a motion by Collister. Seconded by Ailinga. And if we have any more discussion, take the roll.
Rickroll?
Oh, yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hinglinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F is a resolution amending small cell facility guidelines.
Mayor, Council, I kind of half-jokingly wrote in my agenda background here that it's been a real blessing to be Lynch Dallas's first client on this project because Chris Krugman from MMEU and I have spent a lot of time on this for being a kind of a guinea pig of that organization. So Dubuque's, you know, US Cellular is working with Dubuque and Pella and a number of others, and they've actually have been quite helpful. This is a technology that the city has limited rights according to the state and federal government, and if we had a right, I would have recommended it. Some course of action other than this, probably to our Public Works Committee, which we had some good discussion on, I'm sorry, the finance and personnel. We were able to build out a permit application as a result of some of that direction. And as we built out the permit here recently to have it completed, it made reference to a two thousand and eighteen resolution that gave small cell guidelines not consistent with the conversation that we had at our committee meeting. So went through an attempt to go through the the prior resolution and the appendix and then kind of marry it into what we discussed. And ultimately, what we discussed was mostly aesthetic and then also making sure that the city's power and lighting liabilities are separate from that of some telecommunications company coming to town and putting these in. And so I just want to kind of also depress the notion that these will also, I guess, be everywhere. We are talking about, the exact number isn't known yet. They haven't completed the application, but we could be talking about ten to fifteen locations throughout the city and dead zones. And one of the conversations we had about as a committee is trying to aim towards a decorative pole look whenever we can. And there's no there's no easy solution to try to do this right. I mean, our town, some of these neighborhoods, has these wood poles, and you have the power line, and your wood pole doesn't go much higher than the power line, if at all. This equipment has to be an X amount of feet above the power line and have these clearances, and that's what's happening in other cities. And it, you know, we didn't necessarily think that was the right move. So what we're aiming for is to start in with a decorative pole model and set that standard now. And it might look, I guess, out of place, but if this happens a few times over, it will probably be more accepted in neighborhoods. It's likely that these will go in, and at some point, we have to bore some power lines from one pole and jump a spot, and might incur some boring costs to pretty up the neighborhood. But, you know, all that being said and all that being explained here, I had to modify the previous resolution that we adopted. I consulted with the city attorney just to kind of get the right details into place. And this is just a formality so that when US Cellular fills out a permit and they go, wait, wait, what's appendix D? They can see that lines up exactly with what our committee had talked about that day. I don't know if anyone else on the committee had some comments on this, but it's been a very time-consuming topic for us to get this off the ground so we don't have any problems later on.
Are all these poles gonna go on city property?
Yes. Yes, unless there's some agreement. So one of the areas that is a dead zone, I can tell you, is right around Rotman's, Scooters. And, you know, there's Platt Street there, and they don't want to deal with the state, so it's, you know, they'll maybe want to be, once the street off Scooters, I don't have a perfect geography on Jones. So they might want to be a hundred feet down Jones in the right of way or something like that. Or maybe they replace one of those lights at Rotman's to match up with kind of the look along Platt Street. So they have the areas identified, and they're going through that exercise still, but as much as they can, they want to be involved with the city or private properties.
So what's their main function? Just boost the service in Macocheta? Like what?
Their five G towers, essentially.
Their five G, yeah.
Like how much frequency, like from radius from the base of this pole, like how much frequency, like, does it go out?
About two blocks.
So it puts out a frequency two blocks per pole?
Probably roughly.
It's pretty low wattage.
Okay.
All good questions. I I I just know we have limited rights, and and Mayor works in radio and telecom, and he'd be able to answer these questions better than anyone else.
I mean, do we have to do this? Or we?
We can't say no to these things, but we have the ability to dictate like what they look like and some things like that.
Why can't we say no to them?
Because the government says.
Because the government, the government gave them wide-ranging abilities to do these things, so yes.
They're all over the place now. You see one, now you'll notice them all.
And they capped our fee structure, too. I mean, that's, I'm just kind of also blaming it on the state and federal government in some way, and maybe it gets corrected in the future. But we can only charge a certain amount for install, a certain amount for annual recurring fee, and then we're gonna file exactly what Pella did. And we'll we'll charge the maximum, and it's it's within their ability to push this on us, and we're just trying to flex it as much as we can in our favor. And not to discredit US Cellular, they've been pretty good, at least on the negotiation side with us because we wanted some more expensive items to go into this community compared to Dubuque, for example.
Okay, we have a motion by Collister.
Second.
Seconded by Lyon. Any more discussion? And take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Heilinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Sybittson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Item G is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Macokota, Iowa for certain property known as 1204 German Street, 1206 German Street in Macokota, and as legally described herein.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Brad's with us tonight in case we get into the weeds on any of these properties. But the next few items are related to some of the months-long work that Brad has had with the Planning and Zoning Commission. German Street has a few properties up on the corner along 61 that have been used as businesses that are currently residential-zoned and completely mislabeled for decades. And Brad and I went through the exercise of trying to write a number of areas throughout town, and that's what the next few items are about. And just know that with this rezoning, it's been through planning and zoning, it's been recommended. Also requires letters within 500 feet of each affected address.
Anything you want to add, Brad? Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Collister.
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll. Any discussion here? And take the roll.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Heilinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Sybittson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item H is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Macokota, Iowa for certain property known as 500 East Summit Street, 413 South Madison Street, or 16 South Clark Street in Macokota, Iowa, and as legally described herein. This is our first reading.
No further comments, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Collister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Heilinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Sybittson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I is an ordinance correcting ordinance number 1,117, and this is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just mislabeled once upon a time in a scribbler's error in paperwork, and so through this same research project, Bowman Oil was incorrectly zoned. And it's, there's no effective change here, it's just getting Bowman Oil to the correct zoning. And I actually saw Bill last week and let him know that he had an item on the agenda kind of related to the business, so he was kind of told not to panic, don't worry, so no change here. It's just cleaning up some records.
So moved.
We have a motion by Collister.
Second.
Seconded by Heilinger. And we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Heilinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Sybittson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item 11, Reports and Communications, do we have anything from any of the council members? How about City Manager?
That's a nightmare, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd accept a motion to adjourn. Okay, and a motion by Rickroll, seconded by Coleman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Or adjourned?